I'd like to call to order the June 12, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. At this time, I'd ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it too loud?
He's scaring me. I'm jumping a foot.
All right, in accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every Planning Board Member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any Planning Board Member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the Board? If so, it'll be addressed once the case comes before. We only have one case, so it'll be addressed right now, and they'll be asked to be excused. Any members have any conflict of interest?
No.
I will go on record as saying that I do live in Eagle Creek where this is located, but I have no vested interest in this at all. So, I'll leave it to the Planning Board if they want me to excuse myself. Okay, all right. We do have a quorum with five members present. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, sir.
All right, no changes. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so passes the agenda. Minutes, are there any changes to the May 10, 2018 minutes? None? All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Approval of the May 10 Amendment, or, I'm sorry, minutes?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. There's no old business, so we'll move on to the new business. Which is PB 1815 Eagle Creek Golf Course and Grill. Text Amendment to the UDO to modify off-premises directional sign regulations. The applicant and persons in support have 20 minutes, total of 20 minutes, to present their proposal and to make comments. Persons in opposition have 20 minutes to rebut, and then the applicant will have five minutes to rebut them. Is there anyone here to represent the case? If you could, please step up and state your name and address, and then I'll ask you to have a seat while they present the case.
Tim Posh, 109 Greveview Road, Moayak, North Carolina, 27958.
Thank you, Mr. Posh. Tammy, are you going to go ahead and present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to amend the off-premise directional sign standards that are currently in the Unified Development Ordinance. As the language reads today, a business adjoining the Currituck Sound or the Intracoastal Waterway can have an off-premise directional sign. They have to be within two miles from the businesses that are on those waterways and under the same ownership. Currently, they're allowed in the business and mixed-use zoning districts, and they're allowed to be 64 square feet and up to 15 foot tall. The proposed language is to allow the off-premise directional signs within two miles of a major arterial street in addition to the two waterways, to add in allowance in the agricultural zoning district, and to limit the size and height of the off-premise directional sign to that of a street name sign, similar to a street name sign. The sign could only list the business name and the directions which it is located, and it would no longer have to be on the property owned by the business that is requesting this sign. Just a couple of examples to remind you, a text amendment applies countywide, so just a couple of examples. The Moayak Commons Currituck Commercial Shopping Center, and that is from the William E. Wood and Moayak to Food Lion. That space could have about 13 off-premise directional signs. Sampat Professional Center at the southern part of the county could have about 14 off-premise directional signs in that distance. Research based on tax listings as of June 1, and fieldwork indicate that approximately 150 businesses could take advantage of the text amendment. Staff is recommending denial due to the inconsistency with the land use plan. I won't read you those policies, but they're in your package, the policies CA 4 and CA 5. It's inconsistency with the purpose and intent of Section 5.12 of the UDO, and it's not reasonable in the public interest because it does not result in a logical, efficient development pattern, because it commercializes the landscape along the heavily traveled corridors and provides off-premise advertising instead of directing traffic. Now, that is all I have, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions for staff?
Just out of curiosity, Crabby's, I don't think is any longer in business, but are there any businesses currently that are taking advantage as it stands?
I believe there's one other business that's taking advantage of it now as it stands. There are four that could. If Crabby's is out of business, then there will be three that could.
Who is the one? Do you have any idea? I'm trying to picture it, and I can't.
Coin Jack Marina had one there. When you come on to, what is the name of the road? I just lost it.
It's not on the highway. It's down on that access road, right?
Yeah, it's at the highway, at the curve of the highway and the access road.
Water Lily?
Thank you. Water Lily Road, I lost it. Let me think. Is there anyone else? I don't think the other ones are... That may be the only one now since Crabby's is closed.
And this application, it's within two miles. I have to wonder, in the lower part of the county, and I'm talking from the cut down, is it two miles wide?
At the very end, no. I would not think it is.
Well, from the center line of the road, I'm not sure that there's two miles in either direction.
Probably not at the point.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but coming from the south, right there at the road turning and going back to Eagle Creek, there was a sign. Is it still there, or have I just got...
Those signs are, they are by NC DOT. They are, there's a grant program.
TODs.
TODs, thank you. How do you know so much?
Research.
It is a tourist-oriented grant that you can get them, so they have off-premise directional signs, one going as you're going north, one as you're going south. They're in DOT right-of-way, so we don't regulate.
Four-by-eight sign that was there?
It's my understanding that that's how this started?
Yes.
That received a violation notice?
Yes.
And that's what prompted the text amendment? You're correct.
Are the billboards still there?
Billboards are still there, but they're no longer Eagle Creek. Ryan Holmes or something like that.
Okay.
But these would specifically be on private property, so that would make them different from those TODs, blue and white signs that you see that currently say golf course.
Any other questions for staff? All right, Mr. Posh, if you want to present your case, you have 20 minutes.
I don't think I'm going to turn up here 20 minutes and let you guys go home. I'm just basically looking to direct traffic to my golf course, not necessarily the grill but the golf course. Since we've opened up a little over five years ago, rounds of golf, that's one person playing golf at my golf course. It was around 1,500 to 2,000 rounds of golf a year, and we raised it up to this year, we're looking to do about 20,000 rounds of golf, and that's all tourist-related. We have, I did put signs out there to attract some of these people, you know, that have blinders on, they're heading to the Outer Banks to put their feet in the sand and have nice beer, but those people really don't stop, so I've gone to social media, and we've done a pretty good job with that. But they're going so fast when they go past me, I need a directional sign to just point them in my direction. Not looking to advertise, I'm not looking to put any specials up on the board, I'm not looking to put beer specials or anything like that, I'm just trying to get these people pointed in the right direction. So when they come down, those TODs signs are nice, but they fly past those. There was a sign there, everybody I'm sure has been around it for a long time. There was a sign there that, when Mill Run was there, over six years ago, I was told that I could go ahead and erect that sign, put it back together, found some of the pieces, but anyway, so she's right, or you were right, this is how this whole thing started, I was just putting my sign back up. Talked to the farmer there, said, "No problem, you can use the property, I said I rented it from you." He said, "I can even need it to you if you needed it to, because it's just a small corner." So, again, I'm looking to get some tourist dollars at my place. I don't know if you know me or not, but I do donate a lot of money to the Fire Department, Police Department, actually not to the Police Department, but to some of their programs and things like that. So, I feel like a little help would be nice. And that's it, that's my 20 minutes.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Posh?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, because you said it wasn't to generate traffic, just to direct people that were trying to find you.
Sure.
So, I'm confused at that.
Okay, what would be your question?
Well, you said you weren't, you know, looking to generate new traffic, but in, you know, later on, you said indeed you, you know, you were trying to attract tourist dollars, and in the day of, everybody's got a GPS, if they're looking for you, they're going to find you.
People fly past that, and you know the traffic on this road probably is better than I do, but once they fly past you, they can get to the next golf course down the street. Obviously, the ultimate goal would be to make, to get more people in the business and for them to find us, sure, but directional signs is really what I'm looking for. If there's somebody...
I get that point, because we have to tell people, a lot of times, the directions are, you have to go about a quarter mile past the Burger King and take a right at the light, so, because there's no real signage there to say, "Here's Eagle Creek."
The neighborhood sign is even well off the road, so there's not even a sign out front that even says Eagle Creek neighborhood.
Yeah, you can't even tell.
People just fly past there.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Answers your question or not, but tried.
So, you are part of the TODs program?
Sure.
And so that means the state of North Carolina has determined that you are a tourist-based business?
Correct.
So, Tammy, if we, we talked about the 150 businesses between, over by Moayak Commons and Sampat, how many of those businesses are tourist-based businesses?
I couldn't answer that right here. There, I would say there would be a few, and that's something we can...
I know, in the Moayak part, I think that this would be the only one. So, of the 13 signs that could go up, only one of them, if this is passed, for tourist-based businesses only.
Of course, then, most people will say that their revenue increases during tourist time, so...
Sure, but if the state of, the state of North Carolina has determined that the following are considered tourist-based businesses. Hiking, biking trails, horseback riding, fishing, golfing, rafting, skiing, indoor spa, national and state historic buildings, renowned for exceptional architecture, exceptional scenic or panoramic views, and it includes some hotels and motels with amenities, and those are the only businesses that can actually even qualify for the TODs program. So, if we go by the North Carolina state definition, his would be the only one on that list that would be considered a tourist-based industry in Moayak.
In, not suggesting language that the Board should adopt, but you could go as specific as that list right there.
Exactly, exactly. So, if we did that, if we went with the North Carolina definition...
And that list is from the TODs program?
This is from the TODs program. You want to say it? If we went with that language, how many do you think of those businesses would be eligible for signage?
I couldn't answer that tonight without looking at all of them.
I wouldn't think it'd be more than one or two. We had a discussion in the work session regarding the four businesses that the text amendment was changed, and it really was only changed for one of those businesses, but it impacted potentially four. I think you're right. I think we shouldn't get into business of modifying the UDO or doing text amendments to support a single business. But if our economy is a tourist-based economy, I think we should be doing our due diligence to make sure that our tourist-based businesses are helping us out in this economy. So, I think that if we do adopt verbiage similar to the state's verbiage, and we say that if your business is one of the following, and it's a tourist-based business, then it could be, there could be a directional sign, and we could come up with some standards for the size of the sign. I know nobody wanted to see my ugly mug on that sign when I was running for Commissioner, but I don't think it was, you know, you only had one or two of those in that area, and in this case, you would only have one, and if it's a directional sign only and not an advertisement for the, just similar to the TODs program, where it's just an arrow with the name of the business, I think if we put verbiage in there, that would limit it to the same as the other one, up to maybe four or five total on the entire corridor. And in the Sampat area, I don't believe it would even include any, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm trying to think. I know, I think, I'd have to hear your list again.
Within...
I can't remember. I've got it in the office.
Horseback riding, hiking, bicycle trails, fishing, golfing, rafting, skiing. Any skiing down there?
Maybe. Water skiing.
Indoor spas with attendance, historic buildings, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, probably just your golf courses.
That's it? So, what is it, three golf courses?
Maybe.
So, this would really only apply to a handful of buildings?
Maybe a few more.
I don't know. I'm...
I have a question. What's the difference in the size of the sign? It was very vague, approximate, like a street sign compared to the sign, the TODs sign that's out there now, which is rather small, but not a heck of a lot bigger than a street sign.
Yeah.
So, I don't see the benefit. You know, you're going from this to that. Am I correct?
You're correct, and it would be the same...
What's the size of the current signs?
The current signs are allowed at 64 square feet and 50 feet in height.
Yeah, that's a, that's an eight-by-eight billboard. This one is only four-by-eight, so it's 32 square feet. Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
So, it'd be half the size...
They'd do a directional arrow and just a logo or something along those lines.
Yeah, so it's significantly bigger than the TODs signs.
Sheet of plywood.
It's a sheet of plywood, basically.
Right.
Rather than, what is the TODs sign, one foot by three foot? That's what they look like.
I think they're a little bit bigger than that. They're four and a half feet.
Square feet?
Yeah, four and a half feet long.
Okay, so maybe two by four.
They're that big.
I don't know, I'd like to hear you guys' opinions on the, like, the tourism-based one.
I think that, you know, there's a lot of businesses that are off the highway. Not everybody can be able to afford a business on the main highway. If you want to have businesses come through, you have to be off the highway and still have some form of a sign.
Except, the highway is where the business districts are, you know, they're not two miles back.
Right, but I think...
We're still 80% agricultural.
You're not going to want everybody that has a business to have to be forced to be on the highway. That's going to cause cluster and traffic nightmares with a bunch of highways instead of corridors that lead off of the main highway, and businesses can accumulate on that.
In a perfect world, but, you know, how far are we talking in Currituck County before we even approach a level of concern? It's not happening now. Waterpark, they wanted to be front and center, they didn't want to be off the highway.
And there's about 150 businesses, not the TODs-related businesses, but there's about 150 businesses within two miles of the highway, right now.
So, if the purpose of the 5.12 was to make sure we don't clutter the, if I'm not mistaken, in the first section, it actually talks about tourism-based businesses in 5.12 in the UDO, and supporting the tourist-based businesses. So, if we, if we simply say we can allow it for a tourist-based industry in accordance with the North Carolina definition, we're not cluttering, because we're only talking a matter of four or five businesses on the entire corridor. So, that would be in keeping with what the UDO design is.
And you're saying, what, 32 square feet?
Well, this one, the old, the old one says 64 square feet. This one would only be 32, so it's half the size of the old one, or of the old UDO, yeah.
Yeah, it's half sheet plywood, like you said.
Yeah.
And if it would stay to just four or five, I don't think I'd have a problem with that. It wouldn't be that much of a clutter, but when you hear about 150 businesses...
Which is why we would have to change the verbiage if Mr. Posh would be willing to change his application to something like, you know, to add verbiage, including the North Carolina definition of a tourist-based business, and say that you would like to modify the UDO to, or do the text amendment to say that this would apply only to tourist-based industries.
Sure. No problem.
I mean, I hate to, I hate to exclude any business, but, I mean, the county has a point. I mean, if you're going to put up 150 signs on the corridor, that is going to be a lot of clutter. But if, like I said, if we're a tourist-based economy, I think we should be, we should be supporting our...
I think in cases of the Sampat Center, I like the shopping center sign and the idea of that.
Sure.
And keeping it in harmony in places that have that at their disposal, that should be the opportunity for them to advertise.
Like for a large shopping center.
Sure, where the Sampat Center has a shopping center, what's called, under the UDO, they call it a shopping center sign.
Yeah.
And it's one large sign with all of the businesses in that center listed on it. And for businesses such as this gentleman who doesn't have that opportunity, I think we need to have something that helps him out, such as the grill at Carolina Club. And, you know, if they didn't have an opportunity to advertise, they're a little different than the golf course. I think that business should have an opportunity to advertise somewhere.
They own to the road. They got road front, there's a difference.
The golf course does, but the restaurant doesn't, and there's lots of circumstances that I...
You can't separate one from the other.
I think that we shouldn't discourage someone from having a business that's off the highway.
But you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be mentioning the grill in your sign, it would just be the golf course, right?
Correct.
I just mentioned the grill.
Okay, all right.
Golf course he lives on.
So, you're not looking to advertise for the grill? It would just be another sign that says golf course?
Correct. That's part of the TODs program, too, when I called them. It specifically said bar or grill or anything like that wasn't allowed on the sign.
Just the tourist industry, which would be the golf course?
Yes.
I get it.
So, a tourism-related business that operates back on the water, on the Sound or something?
Could be. Well, they would do, like, jet skis and, you know, all kinds of stuff like that. That would all apply to a tourist-based industry.
Can't operate on the highway, because they have to have water.
Yeah, they have to have water, so they have to have somewhere to advertise their tourist-based industry. So, this would apply, when you're saying it applies to the whole county, if you had businesses that were operating on the water within two miles of the corridor, we could do the directional signs for them?
They can already do that.
Oh, they can already do it? So...
It's just that, it's adding, this would be adding within two miles of major arterial streets. If you're on the water, you can already do, have an off-premise directional sign.
So, we're already supporting tourism-based industries?
Like Barry's.
Like Barry's and...
Expect Barry to want the sign, too. He can probably...
He's got one, hasn't he?
He's, he's a sign out there.
Yeah, he's got one on the main highway.
Right there between 7-Eleven and Hardee's.
He came before us a couple of years ago to modify the sign, but... Barry Nelson, right?
Is it just the subdivision sign? It's a, it's an advertisement sign or directional sign?
I haven't seen it in a while, but...
I know, I can't think about it.
I just can't remember.
The only time he puts out signs during Bike Week. I don't think there's a sign there right now.
Neither here nor there, but we have, we have had interest in Moayak from, there's two garages, mechanic shops that are off the highway.
But that, I mean, those wouldn't be tourist-based...
They wouldn't, but they, you might see another text amendment follow-up behind this one as well. That's, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Right. But, like you said, it's not tourist-based, and...
Yeah, if it's not tourist-based, then it wouldn't be a problem. I mean, we're, honestly, I look at it like, we, the county commissioners constantly talk about, and I know the people in the Outer Banks hate this term, "The golden egg," but, or the goose, whatever. But it's, it's no secret that our economy is based on tourism, and we should be doing everything that we, in all our power we can do, to support tourism-based businesses throughout the county, not just in the Outer Banks, not just on the off-road area, not, I mean, we should be supporting tourism throughout the county. And if this one text amendment causes three or four businesses to put up a small sign, I don't think that's in conflict with the UDO, which says that we should be supporting tourism.
I agree with that. I think if, like you said, if he changes his wording to meet the list and, you know, it's, I'm good with that.
Understanding wanting to keep the corridor clean and looking pretty for everybody when they ride through, but I think we ought to be able to find a happy medium somewhere to help this gentleman out.
Yeah, we want businesses to stay here, and they're in business for a reason. We need to get people to them.
I want to see businesses, drives that are not necessarily have to be highway-front, to be able to have an advertisement sign of some sort.
Any more comments or questions?
Billboards are very difficult to get these days, and if that's only your left, your only option...
And they're very expensive nowadays.
Kind of puts a lot of your smaller businesses out of, out of reach of that.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the open meeting, and I'll entertain a motion.
I thought he was withdrawing.
He's going to change his wording to, so it meets the North Carolina...
I think we already discussed that. You're just going to modify the verbiage?
Yes, sir.
What we just said?
If we can clarify things...
Okay. So, what I was saying was, we would modify his comment, his application, oops, let me find it first, where it says, "Off-premise directional signs would be allowed to be erected for businesses located within two miles of an arterial street, provided those businesses are tourism-based in accordance with the North Carolina definition," which is, let me go slower.
No, 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 I've got a copy of that. I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, so you already have a copy of it? Okay.
Yes, I do. I was more interested in 32 square feet, is there a maximum height?
I leave it up to the Board. I mean, do you guys think...
Placing logos?
Because 64 square feet is two, two-by-four, or two, two pieces of plywood. I think for a directional sign, that's a, that's a bit much. I think, I mean, are you okay? I mean, you were, you were okay with the 32 square feet, right?
Sure.
So, why don't we say for tourism-based, we cut that in half to even... So why don't we say for for tourism based, we cut that in half, to even support the the U D O even more by by not polluting the the corridor, we could say thirty-two square feet instead of six sixty-four?
Yes.
Maximum height would be?
Maximum height should probably be the same.
Fifteen feet?
Uh, fifteen feet.
Allow logos as well as the name and directional arrow?
Um, I I think we should probably kind of stick to the North Carolina, like the TODs program, where it's, uh, like business name and, uh, directional arrow. Because I think we'd we'd kind of be getting into the weeds if we start saying logos and and all that.
Yeah, my logo wouldn't work anyway because it has grill in it, so.
Yeah, so.
It would just be-
And I'm sure a lot of other-
Eagle Creek Golf Club, in my specific instance.
Is that all you needed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion. I think it's over there. Yeah, you don't have to repeat all that, you can say-
I was gonna say, I make a motion that we do approve this thirty-two square feet signage, and we're gonna, it's gonna stick with the, um, tourism, but I don't remember everything you just said on on that, but-
Is it square feet or square inches?
Square feet.
Square feet.
Square feet.
It's a sheet of plywood.
Okay.
One sheet.
So, because it's consistent with the land use plan, because-
It's thirty-two.
Oh, okay.
It supports tourist based industry, and request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will direct traffic to a tourist based business, is that what you're?
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you coming out.
And what I will do for, like, um-
What?
Isn't that what she said?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty, okay.
Four foot by eight foot, four times eight is thirty-two.
Sheet of plywood.
Sheet of plywood.
All right. You got it.
Are she the construction guy?
One of the automotive shops was excited about this this opportunity, so I'll just say, you'll have to propose your own text amendment, as well as small automotive, all motor shop-
I mean, I think we're getting into the weeds a little too much if we do all a hundred and fifty businesses, I think that that's the whole purpose of the U D O, I don't think the purpose was to stifle tourism based businesses, I I really don't believe that, I mean, any, whether it's you're jet skiing somewhere, whether you're, you get somebody that's doing hand gliding, you know, and it's not on the water, you got somebody that's doing whatever, somewhere, some tourist based industry, horseback riding, you know, we we can put a sign up near the major corridors.
I think as long as you're staying in line with that TOD program.
Yeah, exactly, you're you're following a North Carolina state program, so I I think I think we're doing good if we follow their program.
We need to support the local businesses, I mean, you have to.
Well, that's where this gentleman was coming from, so if we do it tourist based, which we have, which is absolutely fine, he's born and raised, Currituck has a business, it's not a tourist oriented business, so what I'll direct him to do is if he still wants to pursue it for a type of business other than what we've just approved, that he'll need to propose his own text amendment.
Yes, makes sense. Oh, um, all right, announcements, are there any announcements? No announcements, I have a motion to adjourn, is that an announcement or a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.